Jen, is there any second? All those in favor, is he above? Am I saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no passes for zero. Item five A is consented agenda, resolution ninety-seven ninety-two. A resolution terminating the employment of Renee Montero. Anybody that wants to pull this item or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Is there a second?
A second.
The further discussion, now all those in favor, so if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no passes for zero. There is no special order of business. Item seven is public comment. There's no place to speak, the issue is not on tonight's agenda. Before speaking, please give your name. No name and address for the minutes, and as we ask, please tell your last name, so we can record you, secretary. Do they correct, and also please will you tell us the three minutes? Is there anybody that wants to speak, public comment? Now line up, Mrs. Johnson.
Renee Johnson, seventy-three eighty-five Pleasant Street Drive. Renee J M N fifty-fifty at hotmail dot com. I'll tell you a little story. My grandson is way at the Golden. And in July, I was in Indiana for a week at the Junior Gold Bowling Championships at five different bowling alleys. Saturday, he was in the qualifying Junior Gold Bowling Championships held at the Mermaid. At those five bowling alleys in Indiana, some of those tournaments started at seven a.m. and there was staff available to direct people to where the people were supposed to go. The road shops were open, the restaurants were open. They provided a very warm, welcoming presence to all the people that traveled there. I was a little disappointed. I realize the Mermaid struggles with staffing. I realize that they're limited to what they're certainly going to do and so forth. But if Junior Gold Counselor, whoever makes the decisions about where they hold tournaments and stuff, is asked again whether or not they would hold it there, I think that would probably have somewhat of a negative impact. Just to let you know. Thank you.
Line up, sir.
Frank Wajek, B L A S I A K, twenty-three sixty-one Leport Drive. I've got a fun project for you to work with. The roundabout that we have on County Road, I get a sculpture or something like a sculpture and a welcome sign saying Mountview City of Trees. And you could get the businesses involved, the eating businesses, have a contest for just the citizens of Mountview. And the winner would get eating places, maybe a ten dollar certificate for any of the eating places or all of them. And it would be kind of a fun project and people, it would be a welcome to the city of Mountview, Mountview City of Trees. That's my proposal.
Vince Meyer, eighty-three eighties Spring Lake Road. On May twentieth, I came up to talk to Don about issues of hydroseeding on my property. It's full of rocks and all the millings that came off the street. He in turn got ahold of James and they got a crew out there to rake the big rock holes. Right now, it's covered with millings, big chunks of debris, and nothing's being done. I also asked Don at that particular time, do I need a permit to put a dumpster on the road? I have yet to get anything in writing. Yes, I can, no, I can't. And I asked him also about all the damaged concrete that they poured. And I went up to the city to discuss that with me, and he says everything's under warranty. And I want to know who's paying for the warranty, what's going on? And in return, he says, you better get out of here, I'm calling the cops. You're making a disturbance here. I want to get some answers, and I'm not. Next thing, I'm going to get my attorney and we're going to write a letter and then I will get answers.
Hello, my name is David Wood, W L O D. I live at twenty-five oh one Sherwood Road. And I happen to see this, I don't know if you want to just pass it on the room, so there's some sort of stuff that you can refer to later. I just had a question on the new bill that passed with the state statute. One of the lawyers will forgive me. But this is the new one talking about native landscapes and concerning turf grass lawns, number five, B specifically, managed natural landscapes may include plants and grasses in excess of eight inches in height and beyond seed, but may not include, not just weeds, but must be maintained. I do really want to help our own home as well as maybe neighbors to install native landscapes and native prairies, but I don't want to make it so that it looks like a public nuisance or anything like that. So I just wanted to bring this to you guys, maybe we can talk about some of the point of ideas we want to talk about. What that allows, I don't want to get any tickets or get anybody in trouble for not complying with this or misunderstanding what I mean. So I just wanted to draw your attention to the point of view. Thank you.
Hey, David. Did you let everybody know what your background is?
Uh, my background? Well, it's either two thousand, how far back?
Would we have like a little over five?
Okay, well, I am a U.S. veteran. I got out in two thousand thirteen, served ten years. I studied engineering in Ireland, which is not, sorry, not up. And then I decided to switch over to agriculture, and so I studied agriculture in Europe for two or three years. Ended up with a BA in sociology, minor in ethics, and a BS in marketing. Everybody has one of those, but and a double minor in entrepreneurship and finance. And so then I came back to the U.S. and I started interning at small farms, urban farms, specifically Rudolph Center College in Sacramento, California, where we helped students on the neurodivergent students on the autism spectrum try to reintegrate with society using agriculture. So urban agriculture lesson five acres was there. Then I ended up moving to Western Nebraska, Wyoming border, where I studied bio-dynamic agriculture for five years. We maintained a fully holistic homestead, you could say, five hundred acres. And I worked around in a lot with inmates and incarcerated subjects and things like that, trying to help them reintegrate with society. Then I moved here, was doing raw dairy briefly until I moved to twenty-five oh one Sherwood. Sorry.
So needless to say, agriculture is a passion of yours?
This is my life's work, yeah, especially urban landscaping today, but I didn't want to bring that up. It's something you just, super exciting.
Hello, my name is Luke Edman, E D, I'm O N D. I live on eight four oh seven Spring Lake Road. I'm sure the council loves to hear about the Spring Lake Road project. I won't make a big point of that part of it, but, excuse me, I do have a lot of asphalt and drains in my lawn. The grass seed that was thrown down, there's not a lot of, there's still patches that are growing there, as well as the end of my driveway is coming up and kind of tearing and such. So I don't know if that's anything that's still being addressed or looked into or if the whole street is up. So I just want to get my comment on that. My main comment is the safety of Spring Lake Road. It seems like ever since the road was done, it just continuously, traffic is getting more and more hectic. There's been numerous of times my wife and I have been driving down the road and people are just blasting by us, doing fifty or so, going across the double white or yellow line, whatever speed, constantly folks are going forty, fifty, and I know I don't have, they have the radar by the hydrant somewhere halfway through the street going northbound. But regardless, it just seems like folks going down that road are getting crazy and crazier. My wife has already mentioned, she might look into getting a petition to get a stopside down on Arden. I know some neighbors have talked about getting a stopside down where Arden and Spring Lake Road combined as well, but that wasn't anything brought up to the council. I just want to mention that that road is becoming very, very crazy for folks coming off of ten, sixty-five, and J and all of it. So thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Joan Straight, J O Y C E, J O N E S S T, R A I T. I live at forty-four, or seventy-seven twenty-eight Nolan Drive in Mountsfield. I sent an email to the city council and I would like to read part of it tonight. So this is in reference to the construction that's been occurring and ongoing on Spring Lake Road. We moved into Mountview two years ago. My wife and I purchased a home with the sightline of Spring Lake. We were horrified when we heard that the backyard neighbor's memorial tree had been cut down in preparation for this roadwork and trailwork to begin. We were further surprised to learn that the city's plans to build an unnecessary path from the Spring Lake Park neighborhood to connect to the master trail system, due to the fact that the south side of the lake shoreline was clear cut, many neighbors experienced storm damage in the severe weather that took place on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Our home sustained tree damage and a power outage due to the winds. The neighbor directly behind our house had part of their roof torn off. And that was due in part to the clear cut of the trees that were, that prevented, that prevented some storm, or gave us some storm prevention, protection from, before they were cut down. We attended the city council meeting last week to share our concerns. In preparation for that, we did review the video from April twenty-sixth, when that project was originally introduced. In that video, Don Peterson said that the DNR wouldn't allow a wall without a fence. He said that there would be little inconvenience and that it would be on the city's right of way and that it would not block private property. When residents asked about the look of the project, he said it would be a small portion along the walking path. He also intimated that the fence could just be a net, but that he had to check with the DNR. Don additionally said that it would not cut off any access to property for the landowners and that he gave his personal assurance it would be only on the city's property. These statements were partially true, but mostly misleading. And in the presentation, there was no lake on the map that, to give city residents an adequate reference for the work involved. The plan presented had drawings, a four-foot wall with four-foot chain link to cover. This act alone would certainly cut off the neighbors along Spring Lake Road, but also anyone with a view of the south shore of Spring Lake. There was no notification provided to residents who didn't live along Spring Lake Road. Repeatedly, the fence was mentioned as part of the safety of this project. However, the stretch of road has been used by neighbors for a variety of recreational interests with the lake. The city's plan for this fence and wall will effectively cut off any recreation on this lake from the south shore, including but not limited to wildlife views, kayak.
Pretty minimal, it's inspired. I think.
I kayak, right. I'm Dr. Jean Straight, seventy-seven two eight Nolan Road. I am Joyce Joan's wife. She was talking here in the rest of this letter, I'll just finish it up from here. In her conversation with the DNR representatives, they told her that the concern was for the footprint of the lake and not about the position of the fence. Don very carefully said on April twenty-sixth in the video, and I can give you the timestamps for it, that there would be no problem getting into the different properties. Additionally, the DNR continues to see this lake as a viable wetland and body of water. It has several species of fish, and one species of fish was stopped by the DNR in twenty nineteen. And we're requesting right now that the, very least, the fence not be placed upon the wall. And you meet with citizens and this is a direct, because it has a direct impact on all of them. When they took the trees down for the weather, it's affecting all of our homes. This was last week. I brought, made it break because I figured we probably wouldn't have time to get to the rest of the camera. So a fish should worth ten thousand words, so let me just show you this. This is today. It's more than a five-foot drop. This is right from C R and Noel's house, five-foot drop. Yeah, he needs tractor down there to cut the grass or do whatever he needs. You guys said that they wouldn't go onto private property. And yet, here, right across from them, you see the thing I've circled? Let me make it large for you. This is what is on their property. It is, oh, not even, sorry, wrong one.
Yeah, same to side also.
No, this is it, right here.
Over here.
Look at this. It directly goes from their property. All that water is going to drain off on their property, Don, and I've called you and why, or, yeah, no, I've called you. I've got phone calls from either of you. Right now, it just seems like this whole city council is a shambles. You guys are making decisions and doing things. You guys are saying people got notified, they didn't get notified. We live right behind them. We live right behind them. We're going to have the same impact of what happened with these trees being gone. And just to give you an idea, I want to show you what it looks like with the trees being gone, with this nice, big, white, lovely fence. And if you put the fence on top of the wall, excuse me, wall, if you put the fence on top of the wall, that you can see the red line. Can you see the red line, I have there? It's going to go that much higher. This is atrocious. We have built a path to nowhere for Spring Lake Park. We're counting. Thank you for your time. I look forward to getting my phone calls back tomorrow.
Good evening. Good evening. Aubrey Amundsen, A M U N D, S C N. I live at thirty forty-eight Wooddale Drive. I have a couple just concerns I wanted to express tonight. I was wondering, and I did email this afternoon, I'm wondering if we are able to still access the slide presentation that was part of the public presentation for the community center. I can't find it on the website anymore and I wanted to review that. So I'm requesting that that be put back because I remember at that presentation, it was going to be available to the public. So I would request that be put on the website if it's not there. I couldn't find it, maybe it's there. The other thing, and I can't remember the name of the company that we hired to do the informational website and.
RAP and Associates.
What, RAP, RAP, what was it again?
RAP and Associates.
RAP, thank you, thank you. I have looked at that website initially now, and I have some concerns because I'm aware of the fact that they can't market this proposal that we're putting forth to the citizens in November, that they can only present facts and information, as I understand it. If that's correct, that's how I understand it, Scott. But some of the information seems to need to be more opinions than actual facts. And I hope that we have somebody on city staff that's monitoring that to be sure that we do comply with that statute. Because I, that was one of my initial concerns, is farming that out to a company who talked about their success rate, et cetera. And it seemed like they wanted to help us pause that rather than be neutral and just getting the information out to the citizens, which is what I understand we can do, we have to do. And I also noticed on the website that it said prepared by the city of Mountview. And I'm wondering if we did prepare that as a city or RAP prepared that? Because it did say prepared by the city of Mountview, and I think that's a little misleading if it was prepared by an outside company that we put prepared. I know we paid for it, but I don't think probably that we prepared it. I may be mistaken, but that's my guess. So that's all. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is C R Barrett, B S N B A R R A G A N. Live at seventy-seven sixty-five Spring Lake Road. I have some enormous concerns about many things, my property value, the perils that our property now encounters, just with that thirty-minute storm that we had, there are two trees that are leaning towards a house now. And it is because of all the trees that were dropped. And that's going to be an added expense for me, and I understand that. But what's confusing to me is that the logo of Mountview has a tree right in the middle. And I received a pamphlet from the city of Mountview that stated, I may be paraphrasing some of it, but maintain your trees because it's more expensive to drop it than to maintain it, and it adds value to your house. That being said, I spent almost three decades in the real estate business, and I know for a fact that a tree lot, lake access, and lake view adds value to a property. And my property has been increasing for the last six years, about eight point five to nine point one six per year. And I'm fine with that. But I have reason to believe that this coming year is going to increase again. And the value of my house has decreased, so I'm rather concerned about that. Also, the fact that today I heard that there was going to be some openings, four gates, I didn't know where they were going to be. And on the twenty-eighth of June, at nine thirty in the morning, Mel, you came and you talked to us and said that it would be in the front of our house. You didn't know if it was going to be forty-eight inches or not, but let's see what you could do. And it was going to open up towards the lake. And you said with one step, well, there's a five-foot drop there. That one step is going to do me any good. I can't get down there to move our property. There's no way that I can get down there with a rider. And I wouldn't be able to. With that five-foot drop, I've talked to DNR, I cannot bring berman there so that I can't get my tractor. So what are you guys doing to us? You know, our hands are tired, I can't maintain our property. But I know you guys are going down, and I hear one thing, I don't know where, why the things are happening the way they are. And it's very disheartening to see our property, the challenges we have and the risks that we now have because the trees are gone. And frankly, it's very disheartening. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Seeing that, we'll move on to council business. Item eight A, second reading of ordinance prohibiting use of cannabis in public places. Scott?
I will jump in, thank you Acting Mayor. Josaf, you have an office put this together in response to the section to your last meeting, included with the revised ordinance that also has language inserted in that medical cannabis exception only for usages that are not inhaled, so not vaping, not smoking, that type of thing. You can have that exception as well, there's language in the mountain as to that. The ordinance has been updated in that fashion as well as in the memo. You've got four examples of different language relative to what public places are, or how you can define that, or how you want to go about looking and saying where this usage can occur or can't occur. That's still a decision point for you, and I'm not sure, you know, we had a lot of discussion on that last time, using what was kind of the most broadest model that I provided to you, and Joe put together. Number of cities are utilizing that language. Others have stepped back, as you can see, and they've had some more definition put into what is public place. Even if you go so far as we had conversations last week regarding public place, allowing usage on sidewalks and/or public streets, that's something you can do. But at the same point, you have to comply with some statutes where you can't be a online or services being utilized and can be exposure to minors of some sort. So keep that in mind. This, when we were moving this forward, it may have been better to be on the work session just because I think you still need to decide if you're okay with public places and if the exception's okay. And I didn't really expect you doing a final second reading here, and I don't think you should, in all honesty. I think you should talk about it, decide what you want to do. We can find more examples, there are a number of cities that are doing different things with this. There are some that are moving very quickly, others are holding off. I know there's an effort in Ramsey County right now where the administrators shared that there's discussions about using a definition and having some type of public place that's provided by county ordinance that we could utilize as well. I don't see that that's moved forward, but there are other counties that are doing that right now, unless you know if that's moved forward at all beyond that. I haven't seen it. I have seen it in other counties in the state though, that they try to do something for cities within that county, and will unify on what definitions are being made so you don't have confusion when you go from city to city. So keep that in mind as well. But this is really a discussion item for you, and I don't expect you to try to adopt it, I don't think you should. I think we should come back and direct final language that you can have, have on the website, and then have at the next meeting, so it's available for final reading at that point. Should you decide to keep moving forward with it.
Scott?
Yep.
Council, any questions here, Scott?
Yes, Scott, it, the way that they're, per the charter, we have to have, we have to have two weeks or between.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right, so we couldn't do it today. We shouldn't.
You maybe shouldn't, could you? Yes, you could. There are other communities that would move forward with this. They would consider this a public health safety issue. There are some that have said that. I'm not recommending you do that. And when I talked to Joe afterwards, I said, yeah, it can go your way. It's not set up for that, so no, I don't want you to adopt it.
But we would have to have declared like an emergency in order to do that, right?
No, you would have been able to put it in the preamble, is what you could do. It's not a declared emergency like it is under state statute, like for the pandemic. But there are other communities that are saying, yes, this is a public issue that you should move forward. We've got other ordinances you've done on single readings as well. I'm not recommending you do that because I don't think you're ready. Anyways, I didn't ever believe the language would be in a form that you could do that. So no, you'll go to next meeting, which you have permission, so I don't worry about it. And again, keep in mind, it really isn't part of public hearing, because there was some discussion as to that last time as well. The interim ordinance would have required a public hearing, this does not, though, for not doing anything relevant to zoning or under the state statute that would allow us to move forward. This is totally separate from that. It's a police powers action. You can even piggyback this and make it consistent and tie it into other smoking bans we have as well in the communities. So I, that's why, that was starting language, it's still at that point. I think you need to provide further direction to staff and myself, and then we can find lots of ways to keep that going.
A resident had emailed me today about the fourteen days, and I had responded back. In fact, my plan was to recommend that we not move forward on the second reading, that we wait for the next council meeting, the fourteen.
In all honesty, if this would have not been sent out, knowing that the other ordinance was removed, had we not added the consent item, I was going to tell you to cancel this meeting and put it on for the work session discussion instead. So, didn't happen because I was away that day, but it still works up here, you're essentially approaching it like a work session at this point.
But what I'm hearing, Scott, that staff still needs a correction from council on what we mean by public place.
Yeah, I think you need to think strongly about that because there were comments from citizens about, well, what happens if you step six inches over on the sidewalk and things like that? It's a relevant comment, it's true. It's different if you've got a group congregating outside somebody's house on sidewalk or, you know, or something like that. That's where you have some problems and you'll never have a perfect ordinance, it's just not possible. Human nature doesn't lend to those types of possibilities. The reality is, what we were given is a starting point. It was a broad definition, it covers a lot of areas, you can definitely step back from that. You've got to decide if that's okay to start with that, I guess. I think the bigger question was on the medical exceptions, because you will find people say if they utilize cannabis through an inhaling method, we don't have that in there right now. That's not the exception I've given you, that's not what most folks have asked for, that's the other decision point here. Public place, and you want to allow inhaling. Now, keeping in mind, that still probably can't happen in public parks if you have kids and all of that. That's just the reality of public life. That's a state law, it's not something you can control.
Scott, as I look through these examples.
Yep.
Other than, um, other than Lakeville, the other three cities seem to pretty much say the same thing, including trailways and sidewalks.
Yeah, they did. They kept them there, and that's why I wanted to show you. The other communities are including those, even though we have comments that, that question that. There are other communities including that. And when Joe asked me about that, I said, "No, include those." So you can see it. A council can observe that. Um, the, I think of three other communities that are moving forward with ordinances this week that I'm dealing with, all have gone right now with the broader discussion of what public place would be. That's their starting point. That's consistent with how they're treated for tobacco and, uh, and alcohol as well. So that's why I'd be a lot prepared for that.
You would call it our ordinances related to tobacco and alcohol?
Uh, so at the top of my head, I know it's parks. Uh, alcohol, we have the same thing.
I think they're even going to sign a park entrance.
We do. We typically do. Obviously, it covers, uh, tobacco use covers, uh, public places like schools, things like that as well. Uh, alcohol. So, that's kind of the default. A lot of people are looking at and saying, let's go with that. Keep it consistent, and that's why the larger definition was provided to you. It's consistent with what we have as well.
Councilman Wood?
Um, yep, you know what, and looking at these, when you brought up the Lakeville one, I, I actually like the idea of what Lakeville did here. And basically, what they're saying is where you can.
Yeah.
So if we put, if we use the Lakeville one and, um, let's say the Inver Grove, that one covers what areas that you can think of that are covered.
Right.
I think with those two, that just about covers everything, I think, that we need to cover in ours.
Okay.
And I'm assuming, like in the Lakeville one, that the second bullet, uh, private property not generally accessible by the public unless the person is explicitly prohibited from consuming cannabis power, cannabis products, lower potency cannabis, blah, 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 blah. Um, and I'm taking that as probably being a, an apartment complex, maybe?
A business apartment complex, private property, someone's got a giant lot that they don't want people standing on and utilizing. Yes, you, you have your rights to determine people can't smoke or drink or do whatever.
No, my apartment complex, it's, you know, smoking in, in the apartment. So people are outside.
Yeah. That was the issue that was raised last time because the statute itself has a multifamily control provision that says you cannot do it there.
But that's their rule. That's...
Well, it's state statute. That, that is the statute that says you, and as to cannabis, you cannot do that. Oftentimes, you see with tobacco usage, you may have a, a somewhere up or a patio or something that's utilized for that. There's questions about whether or not the statute allows that at this point in time for a multifamily community.
Because there's minors there, right?
Yeah, well, that could be. It could be a senior housing project too, if it doesn't have minors. But oftentimes, you have minors that are visiting, and that's been the issue as well. Um, yeah, remember what I said last time? This is going to go back to the legislature because you're going to see all these little things that, it's kind of like, well, you're right. And I think Zach you brought up last night. Well, they have no place to go with that if you don't have somewhere else in the community.
That's true. They don't. Well, in, in my lease, it states that you can't smoke.
Yeah, and, and most apartments have that now with a no smoking clause.
Right.
They do. I mean, that's frankly, that's how it's got to be.
So people step outside their apartment and go stand by their car in the parking lot and, and smoke outside. And one, one lady who takes her little chair out in the grass.
Right, and I, I think for tobacco, that works. For cannabis, I don't think that works, based on what the language is in the statute right now.
Councilman Wood, Woodsrum, and Serat, any thoughts?
I totally understand, and if you call for the vote, that's what I'll do.
Oh, I don't have to vote tonight, but I...
Well, no, but aren't we going to do something to say that we can do it period on, like, somewhere else?
Yeah, you give us direction.
Yeah.
Councilman Wood?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I had trouble wanting to regulate anything out of what's the city actually is in charge of, right? Like weed, we're in charge of the roads, the sidewalks, the parks. That's kind of the public works, this building. That's kind of our business, right? What's going on at a large, that's kind of the people that own that property. That's their business. And I don't, you know, nobody's going to be, and again, it's probably going to change because when they, you know, when somebody gets a license to sell it, they may get an exception to be able to have people use it there, right? So, I, it seems really, really difficult to want to do something without knowing what the, what everything's going to look like in the long run other than just focusing on what, what's our business, which is parks, trails, sidewalks, games, and, and, and all public works.
I agree. I mean, I think that's what council meetings are saying. I mean, if the department thinks the state statute thing, we have no control over that.
Right.
It's like, um, I mean, would you be open to saying whatever our current job...
Tobacco policy is?
Yeah.
I, I would. Yeah, I would. I think, you know, when we kind of talked about, well, I brought it up, about the park piece, uh, last week. And I, I think that having a place, something like that would be worth a discussion. And if anybody else is open to it, maybe pushing that to the commission or letting them explore and see if they're open to it because they're kind of on its task of managing the parks.
But then, Zach, is that also going to include cigarette smoking, cigar smoking, light smoking?
Well, I, I see them as really two entirely different things. Um, you know, cigarettes and tobacco in general have a lot of waste to them. Like you can pull up the parking lot. You can see little butts everywhere, like, you know, cannabis users. Um, they don't have stuff with filters on it. And it's, um, it's just a different product altogether. So I think one of the main annoyances with cigarettes is that there's a lot of waste with it. Cigars are giant, and there's still good waste back there with that. I just don't think that we'd see that with cannabis. Plus, the other overarching issue with it is, is like, you know, there's, this is just coming out of a place of being illegal. And one of the things that, um, you know, and nobody's going to actually be able legally buy it here until 2025. But forward-thinking, the idea behind it, why, why I think it's something that's worth a discussion is, is some point in time, this is going to be a normalized thing that's going to be, you know, the next generation that's younger than me, like, this is totally normal for them. And, you know, I used to be really bothered when people say that marijuana was a gateway drug because, just because you do that doesn't mean you're going to do other things. But in the current environment, that everybody's saying, it's, no, it's a bad thing, it still puts you in that place where it introduces you to other people that have other things. And by being legal and by maybe creating space and accepting which way society's going, maybe over time, when it, when people are able to walk into a shop and buy it, it starts pulling people out of that environment and into thought of those places. And maybe we don't have people that started with weed and then drifted into other things. Maybe they just stay in that space. I don't know. I just think that it's just something that's worth having a conversation about.
Right, but for right now, I think we still need to have some guidelines.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm totally fine with having guidelines and, and using the tobacco policy. What I'm talking about is just a specific space that if we're okay with it, we can say, hey, this is the spot, and if we're not, that's okay too.
But I, I think you still have to include regular smoking. If it's, if we're attaching this to the smoking ordinance.
Uh, they were, Councilman Woodsrum's head, if we were to ever at some point go down that path, I think you'd have to readdress where you, where you place this ordinance wise. I think you'd have to disconnect it from the tobacco ordinance.
Oh, I totally expect that we're going to be changing all this.
I have a question for, for Don. This is a policy decision, right? Does the park commission really get involved with policy?
Definitely not.
I don't think so. Probably haven't been enough.
Right, which I would be worth hearing.
If I can add, to both sharing Zach's points, it's true. The Lakeville language, company with Inver Grove language, is similar, I think, what both of you were saying because it removes the second full paragraph on page two of the memo where it talks about both public and private interests. It takes out that private interest issue and just follows it down with the city which is similar to what we have for tobacco and alcohol. So I, I agree. That's why I had to talk about this because when you have that private interest language there, it does have a very broad impact across the community.
Right.
So do we have consensus to, at least for now, follow our tobacco ordinance guidelines?
Is there time to speak on this topic?
Um, we had public comment last time.
Yeah, I was out of town. I was out of town, and I, I...
Chris, I'm, I'm sorry, but we also have a, a work session. You can, you can say what you want to comment in your public comment at work session. We have a void agenda tonight. I want to get through this special council meeting so we can move to the work session. So...
So you're not taking any input?
We took plenty of input last council meeting. And this will come back as an actual action item where you have your opportunity to...
I came here just to listen out. That's my game, you know?
Well, I think what Gary just said is that we're going to have public comment at work session, and we're not making a definitive decision on it tonight, so you know what we'll talk about.
You gotta just come out from a toy with a long angle, or, I'd like to have a little bit.
Is there any other, I see we have...
So are we, so what are we doing next, at, at our next meeting then?
I would bring back an ordinance.
With the, the second reading?
With those types of language, namely Lakeville, Inver Grove, which I think covers what you're talking about, but it's going to be consistent with what our tobacco and alcohol treatment is. So, it does follow what that language did there. So it takes out that private component there. Which, again, that's a decision businesses can make and, and offering and do what they do. Uh, but this will cover much more definitively public areas. I mean, public areas are controlled by the state.
And I know, like, Zach, you and I both, it's going to change. And it's, for right now, if, if we need structure, and then we can go from there.
Well, I don't really see that what we're talking about is being much different than what the state ordinance is anyways because there's nowhere, there's no way you're going to know when minors are going to be present.
I, I, I understand.
That's why it is somewhat of a fluid enforcement issue. It will be when that happens.
You know, I, I know minors here, I mean, it's...
It's your own authority. Yeah, it's... It will also impact even in a private business if, if minors are present. So that's why I say it is somewhat fluid on how that interpretation. But if you're avoiding that and not having that in the definition, I think it will help.
So you hear consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, is there any other council business? There was an A, B, and C on the agenda?
Yeah. Take any action on this topic? No, I, I understand the consensus. The White House is directing. Staff will work on that. City attorney will work on that. And, you know, Gary, from the standpoint of, of A, B, and C, we've just followed, and staff has been following their agendas and typically for a, a special meeting like this. In the future, we're going to probably drop those provisions, keep it very detailed, what you're talking about. Uh, so no, I'm not aware of anyone else that would be on your view.
Move on to item nine. Item nine is reports to Mayor and Council in the county attorney's report.
Welcome.
Item D is reports to staff. Item C is reports to city attorney. Scott?
Nothing for you. Thank you.
Okay, with that, the next council work session, the next council meeting is Monday, August 14th. At 6:00 P.M., the next council work session is Tuesday, September 5th. At 6:00 P.M., it's Tuesday, December 4th, Thursday, Friday. And with that, we are adjourned at 6:47.
You fine to switch over there, Mr. Acting Mayor?